We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Westegard.
Yes.
Holtman.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Us.
Thank you.
Here. And we have open public forum. Anybody want to speak? If not, wait till the agenda item.
I do, John.
Go ahead.
A little bit. I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but it's just some thoughts on the attorney situation. It just seems to me that a sitting attorney at every council meeting is not needed, I would not think. And so I just am hoping that you'll review that whole process and see if that's necessary. It just seems like a lot of money when you can email them whatever the situation was, and a lot of times they have to follow up with it anyway. So, just my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Vicki. Consent agenda. Any additions, corrections?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
So.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Us.
Yes.
Okay, Mary from the Hometown Pride is going to give us some information. You have the floor.
Great. That was fast. I thought I'd sit for a couple more minutes. Is this a good spot?
You can sit. That'd be a real good spot.
Okay, great. Do you have the clicker, Scott? Are you going to be my clicker?
I'll have to be the clicker. We're not quite that advanced with the clicker.
So you'll be my clicker. Awesome. Okay. I'm Mary Ludwig, and I am the Board Secretary for the Hometown Pride Committee. And so I'm here tonight to spend a little time with you to talk about what Hometown Pride has been involved with for the progress of the Event Center, and then kind of where we've been as far as the committee goes for the last year and a half. So we are a volunteer board, and our president is Tammy Moller, who's with us this evening. Tiffany Mogensen's our vice president. I'm the secretary. Connie is on the board. Reggie Ashite is here with us tonight. Larry Hauser and his daughter Abby is our youth member, which was a recommendation from the ESAC County Schools. Mark Kudoff, who's here with us tonight. Also Brett Mugenberg, who's here as well, and then Linda Olson and John Smith. So our Hometown Pride Committee was developed as an initiative by Keep Iowa Beautiful, which is a state project. And Lakeview is one of nine communities in SAC County participating. And then SAC County in of itself is one of just five counties in the 99 counties in Iowa that's able to participate in this program. So that's pretty unique to us as a county, and really shows what a great opportunity we have if we're just one of five out of the 99. I want to take a couple of minutes really to thank you for the support that you've given the Hometown Pride Committee for the last nearly two years. I feel you've been in favor of a lot of the things that we've been moving forward, and we're really grateful for that because it does take a whole community to get behind projects to make them happy, happen, especially in small communities. So Lakeview was approved to participate in the Hometown Pride program just about two years ago in November of 2014. And then spent some time, I believe, recruiting, and then the first meeting was held in June of 2015. And then we meet once a month in this room, sometimes two, two and a half hours per month. Next slide. So the, really, as a Hometown Pride Committee, you know, we said, okay, we're going to have pride in our community, but that can really mean a lot of different things. And so we needed to really check in with the citizens that we serve in Lakeview and really get a pulse for what does the community feel would really reflect pride in our community? What feels, needs to be priorities and projects in the community that would happen in the next five years or so? So there were some surveys that were completed, and we also did a SWOT analysis with Rick Konziker from the Midas 12, Region 12 Councils.
Region 12, yeah.
And so the community survey happened last fall in 2015, and from that came feedback for six priorities. Three priorities are what we would call major projects. Projects are going to take a lot of time and effort and energy. And then three smaller projects that we can do with less time commitment, less investment, but also still priorities. And so the Event Center rose to the top as a major priority. And then improvements in Speaker Park, and as you know, right now we're working on the Splash Pad project. And then tourism promotion. And some of those things happen intermittently for the committee. One thing we've been talking about now is the travel show that will be in Omaha in February and having representation there and being there for that. We also volunteered at like the Stone Pier Concert to do the burgers and whatnot. And then the smaller projects are kiosks, which John Smith is heading up, and those are like information stations in our community about different highlights. Beautification, which is a project that Brett Mugenberg and Tammy Moller completed with the plantings at our entrance signs. We also helped with the cleanup day around the lake, and then a mascot idea. And we haven't really moved real forward on that project. It's an idea that's a little bit on the back burner. So we came to the council with really a sketch of our five-year plan, and then that was endorsed by you folks in November of last year. So we thank you for that vote of confidence. So the Event Center, where have we progressed? What have we gotten done? We approved the Event Center concept in November of 2015, so we thank you for that. And then also you approved support for a feasibility study in the spring of 2016. And we felt the need for a feasibility study to really gain some insight from our key stakeholders as to what do we need from an Event Center? What does that, what does that look like? Make sure that we're heading in the right direction as we continue to work on this. So the Event Center progress, we needed to do a little research. Our team has a wide variety of knowledge around the table. However, creating and building an Event Center is a new task for us. So we certainly want to go into that project with open eyes and ears and really learn best practices and what has worked well for other locations. So last March, after one weather delay, we did make it up to Sioux Center in Orange City and made a stop in Everly. And we picked those communities because they're far enough away where we felt they would be very open with us on some of their best practices versus touching base with folks that would see us as really competition. So we spent an entire day going through those facilities and learning from them and what's worked well and what hasn't, and what they might do differently, and those kinds of things. So it was a bit of a research project. Then we started branching out with a feasibility study, and we worked with Kevin Woods, with Woods Consulting out of Illinois, to complete that for us. So the feasibility study started really in March of 2016 after some initial conversations with Kevin and determining that his fees would produce results that would be helpful. So the committee was tasked with putting together a list of businesses or key stakeholders, if you want to refer to that, for Kevin Woods to reach out to. So, you know, he's not from the area, so he's not familiar with, you know, what are some of our major businesses and whatnot, so we were helpful with that. And then he came to Lakeview in April and met with some of those folks one-on-one. He also continued his gathering input through really the end of July or so, reaching out to a variety of different businesses, either through mail or on the phone or in person. So we were able to wrap that up kind of end of July or so. And then in August, he presented us with the final feasibility study. So that was presented our way in August, and what we learned from that is that he was able to get some concrete feedback from 23 organizations. And over half of them, 52%, were either, they were very likely to use the Event Center and on a, not just like a one, kind of one-and-done, but more on like a regular basis that they would use that every year for an annual training or an annual party or a whatever, you know, something on a consistent, ongoing basis. So that's important to know from our community as well, that it's not something that they would see as a, you know, this is just for my, you know, I have one daughter and it's for her wedding. But, you know, more so for, you know, this is something that I, as an investor in our community, as a, you know, someone who has a business here, would be able to use this location on a regular basis. And then for the organizations where somewhat likely to use the Event, use the Event Center. So through that process of learning from our, the businesses and folks in town, what they would need in an Event Center, there were a couple pieces that really were consistent in the feedback piece. One of them was to have updated technology, to be fancy, if you will, with the projectors and the AV equipment and the ability to dim lights. One of the Event Centers that we toured, which was in Orange City, they controlled everything from an iPad, so they could, if there was an issue with heating and cooling or sound system, they were able to have that iPad with them and then make those changes kind of Johnny on the spot, which was really nice to know that that feature is an option if we were able to incorporate that into our plans. And then the real need for a grand row, a grand room, you know, something that's large and really capable of accommodating weddings and celebrations and community events with adequate space, so people can move around and not be on top of each other, and, you know, the sound is good and you can, you're there to enjoy the event and have conversations and mingle and socialize and those kinds of things. So having a room that was large enough to accommodate those type of situations was also identified as a high need. So we also took a look at some of our neighbors, if you will, one of those being Templeton. They have a population of about 345, and they did a project a couple of years ago for an Event Center. How many have been to that Event Center? Raise a hand. One, two, three-ish? Nobody in the audience? Or peanut gallery or whatever? So the Templeton Center is really nice. They invested about a million and a half dollars. That was a combination of private funds and then some grants through private foundations and Vision Iowa. They can accommodate about 430 people in their grand room. They rent it for about 600 bucks a month, or per time, I mean. And then I thought an interesting fact was how often they rented it. Twenty-five Saturday events during the course of 2016. So that's basically every other weekend for 2016. And then for 2017, they already have 20 Saturdays already reserved. And as I looked through their calendar, most of those are weddings, graduations, certain companies having large type of events. And then they also do bookings during the week for certain trainings and whatnot. It's operated by the city of Templeton, and they have two full-time people, a manager and assistant manager. Their biggest downfall is no lodging in Templeton, but plenty of alcohol, so maybe that's what's. I just captured a few photos of the Templeton Center to show off a little bit of what they have. You can see that there's ample natural light with all the windows, very, you know, it just has a nice, modern feel to it with their decor. They do have a permanent-type dance floor is what that looks like. And then a real, almost like a horseshoe bar, so that would accommodate a lot of people. Maybe that goes with the Templeton ride, I'm not sure. However, it's a very nice center, and it shows off well for their community. And I think that's reflective of the, really, the amount of, the number of Saturdays that they're booked, not only this year, but for 2017 already as well. Then the next spot is Everly, and we learned this information from their deputy clerk, as you can see the source cited there. And they also are similar to Templeton where they're booking something at least twice a month, two and a half times per month is what they're averaging. Their rent is on the lower end, you know, it ranges between, you know, $250 and $75, depending on which room you want to use. And then they outsource some of the staff that they need, like the cleaning event, and then also someone who's kind of like their bar manager and does inventory and the ordering and meets the beer truck, those kinds of things. And it is handled through City Hall, and it is city-owned up, operated as well. So that's the town of Everly with a population of about 600. And these are a few photos that I snapped while we were up there touring in March. That's a picture of their kitchen. So it has a nice-sized center island. That's really a picture of about the whole kitchen. It's not extremely large. And then their main room has a large dance floor, and then the tables are around the perimeter of that. A couple issues they ran into that they learned after having the center built and operated was the sound system and just balancing the acoustics in there, and also accommodating some of the AV equipment. So what we learned from them really was to be very diligent when you're looking at what you need for AV equipment and do it right the first time. And then they also have like a side boardroom, probably less than half the size of this room with those two tables, and they use that for things like senior meals, which is something we could possibly look at, too. We'll go to the next slide. I'm a fast talker sometimes, so I hope I'm not zipping through this too quickly. Listen quick, my dad would say. The Lakeview Event Center, for us, we really see this as an ideal location for kind of real three, you know, primary areas. One would be celebrations, so your weddings, your anniversaries, graduations, birthdays, if you, you know, hit those big milestones of 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, if you're lucky. Baby and wedding showers, retirements, reunions, and then business meetings, like corporate meetings, seminars, and workshops. Trainings and board retreats would be ideal. And then from the economic development and tourism standpoint, some of those high points would be the all-class reunion for our graduates, sports and travel shows. A bridal show is something we don't have in our community right now. Association meetings for large groups like our Black Hawk Lake Preservation Association, the Historical Society, perhaps the Community Club, and more. There's a, that's a long list, but I felt that really summarized some of the highlights there. It really is the ideal location for what I feel we talk about a lot, and that's the Lakeview lifestyle. And that Lakeview lifestyle, you know, really resonates with quality of life. And why do we choose to come to Lakeview for the summer, or we live here year-round and we have our kids in the school system? You know, what are, what are some of the things that really draw us to Lakeview to say, this is the right place for me and for my family to, to live and work and play? So some of the things that are a piece of that Lakeview lifestyle that we've seen really has enhanced our community are things like the Progress is Promised with the Chili Cook-Off, even though my chili did not win against Reggie's this year. I'm going to try harder next year. The Arctic Open is a fun event in the community. Vendor shows, dueling pianos and comedy shows. I think of the wintertime.
There you go.
When winter is a little bit slower with events, because, you know, as a Lake community, we're very focused on outdoor events in the summer, which is fantastic. So, you know, those dueling pianos and comedy shows, maybe some dance lessons, I could benefit from those. Would be fun to do in the, in the wintertime and really draw people to our community during what we would call the offseason. But doesn't necessarily have to be an offseason. There's some opportunity there. Community fundraising events, like the Murder Mystery Dinner Theater is a fun event we have. Card tournaments, if you're a Uker player. School events, perhaps. I've not visited with the school, so I'm just kind of putting that on there. Christmas and New Year's Eve parties would be fun. And then also a rain location. Mother Nature's not always our best friend, so this would be an opportunity to have a rain spot. I know we've kind of run into that once in a while with a Stone Pier Concert, and kind of made the best out of, you know, out of the situation. So those, those would really be some opportunities. A lot of those tie into tourism, and some of those tourism dollars, you know, there's a return on investment when we talk about the local option sales tax. And this is a snapshot of what the local option sales tax has returned to Lakeview in the last eight and a half years, which is just under $800,000, about $752,000 has been in Lakeview. That's been the return on some of that investment for our community. So we could see that continue to grow as we draw people to our community. So some considerations for the Event Center. These are things that are, that we've, that we've penciled in, that we've been talking about as a committee, that would be beneficial to make the Event Center really successful for the long haul. And there would be seating for 400 people or so in the great room. We would have tables and chairs and the necessary furnishings. A pre-function space, a warming kitchen, a bar and portable bars, because we know that the alcohol sales is where we make the dollars. Modern audiovisual equipment, a family restroom and a women's and men's restroom. And that family restroom is something that we learned about as we really became educated about Event Centers, that a family restroom is, you know, you'll see them in some department stores if you're a shopper like I am, where they have just a large room with a single toilet in it, and there's no, it's just a one-entry door. And this is helpful when, if you have a spouse or a family member that needs extra room because they're in a wheelchair, or perhaps they have a walker, that you're not struggling inside a handicapped restroom, per se, but you have your own kind of family restroom to help your, your loved one to the bathroom. So that's what that is. A coat room, ample parking is always important, and then a covered entrance as well, so you can pick up your, your date or your kiddos or your loved one at the door without being affected by the elements of the weather. So what are we doing next? What that looks like are these are our three primary focuses as we move on with the Event Center. We're not here today to ask for anything. Today is really about giving you an update about what we've been working on and the direction that we, we hope to look at. Project design is going to be important because that impacts the next piece, which is determining what the financial investment is. And then that helps with the third piece, which is really researching our funding sources with grants, et cetera. So that is what we look to. We're really grateful for our, our city council men and women for your support of this project over the long haul. It's been a fun endeavor. It's taken quite a bit of time, but, you know, something that's really big like this, it takes time. So we're, we're grateful for the time that you've given us and grateful for the time that you'll, I'm assuming, give us to move forward for the rest of the pieces. And with that, I really thank you for listening. Anything else?
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
My pleasure.
Okay, Tom, you got some information you'd like to share?
Yeah. Got my slides and stuff?
Yeah.
I thought we were talking about bike stuff, not slides. That's some of these handouts here, just a little bit of information. I didn't take too much of your time, but I guess I'm coming to you with the idea of, sorry, of getting a fix-it station, which is repairing bicycles, filling them with air, not just to fix them. As an avid bike rider, if you go to an area to start your bike ride, you will want to, these are really excellent to fill your tires. Like, if you have a road bike, you pretty much have to put air in it every time you go out. You don't just, your bike doesn't sit there for more than a few days, and you're going to have to put air in it. Either do that at home, or you do that once you get there. These are real slick. If you go to the page where you see the little, the little stand, the gal using one there. It's really nice, hold your bike up in it. There's tools inside of it to do any adjustments you might need to do on your bike, which a lot of times happens as well, changing seat height, tighten things up, changing, maybe you go from clips or different pedals. All that stuff can be fixed right on these. They're actually very slick, and I've seen them a lot of places in Des Moines, the High Trestle Trail, we have them at a lot of locations. The one thing there, to keep in mind is not only will they repair your bike, but they're, they're actually really helpful to keep your bike just maintained. All the necessary tools, they hang inside of that through cables. I've talked this with other groups, and they've said, oh, it's going to get vandalized or something. Not going to get vandalized, it's a heck of a lot of work to steal an Allen Ranch out of their cable. You have to come with some sort of major tool to get out of tool that's worth a couple bucks, but. And of course, the, one of the main things, having a pump on there, like I said, whether you have a flat tire, whether you change your tire, or if you get there and you're a little low, it's really for safety and for riding trails, it's good to have the proper air in your tire. They are, we did an early bike ride this year, and one of our goals was to get some money towards one of these. And I think with the other bike rides, we can team up together and hopefully raise some money for, to help pay for these. But we're, I guess what I'm here to ask for is, is the city, we'd be putting these on city property, for one. Like to put one by the Bike Arts, for sure. If you look on the sheet there, where people are getting on the trail and where it gets used a lot, and it's obviously an area, area that gets a lot of people using it, and that'd be a good place to, you're getting on, you get, you see people from all over. I drive past it every day, and you see people taking their bikes off of their racks, and it'd be the perfect place to have one. And, and we also talked about the possibility of putting one on the other side of Lake. That map makes sense to you, over where like Friar's Living McCullough's property is, over there. This is past. And the city, right, spoke to the mayor a little bit, the city owns this area here, and this is where we're talking about having it. So if you, that'd be a lot, a lot of use, that would be for people in the community already, people coming from the, say, the campgrounds, and just when you did have an actual flatbed. I mean, I have probably six flats in my life, I've had three over in that area, on different bike rides. It'd be nice to get somewhere to, to get air in your tire and just do some adjustments as well. They're also just, we get a lot of people that come to the community that ride bikes and track them here. They're a really nice way of just saying, you know, we're, as a community, we're here for you bikers, too, and want your ride to be safe. And once they know they're here, I think it's going to bring them to a, that would be, in my personal opinion, if I was traveling somewhere to start a ride, I would definitely go to where one of those was located. It would, like I said, it would, it would allow you to get your bike prepared without doing all that before you left. Anything else? The company we looked at is based out of, up in Minnesota, so they're very weather-friendly. They're used up there all the time. Last year, the winters, harsh winters. And they have examples in there where they've set them up in their area. They do not come in blue. There is a really, really expensive one that comes in blue, and they have a patent on the blue color, so.
We can paint them.
So just, just so you know. We thought you could get a galvanized one and have it powder coated blue as well. It could happen. I know a guy who could be, uh. I guess the company today is with the idea of us moving forward with this and the idea of getting a couple of these. I was there, I said there is no price in there, is there? Roughly looking at, I think they were $1,200 a piece, which, the more I look at them, I would prefer at least one of them had a gauge on it. I noticed the one that's $1,200 does not have a gauge, and that would be key for the pump, actually. I think it's a big deal, but when you're putting a lot of pressure on a tire that's big, you kind of need an old gear out there. So a gauge, I think, would be key, and explore that, explore that price a little bit more. I know they come with gauges as well.
Do they come with gauges right on the?
Yeah. It'll, like, if you look, this one here, yeah, you can see there's a gauge, actually, on that one.
I would say it would have to have a gauge.
Yeah. I don't think it'd have much use. Right, right. For sure, we'd have to have a gauge on it. And I explore that price a little bit more, as well as, I do know that Carroll's and they're looking at getting some of these as well, and like the Carroll, Carroll County and through like Swan Lake. And I don't know if you guys know Doc Gredeman? He's really big and helping keep the trail clean, and he was wanting to get some on that end. And we were going to pool together and purchase them all together, which would save for sure minimum the shipping, you know. Whenever you order something like this, the shipping always kind of gets you. So they would help with that. I, you know, if we can come to them along with the SOC Trail Committee and go, we need six of these, I think we'll get a best, better deal. So that's part of the plan as well.
Where are they at in Minnesota?
Where are they out of?
Yeah.
Oh. I called them, he says from Minnesota. I guess, like, you're saying about going and getting them? I kind of thought that, too, after he said that he could save on, save on the shipping, and it'll just be worth a trip up there, maybe a discount some other way.
I got trucks around there.
Okay. I'm sure, I was kind of, that was one thought I had, too. I think they're close to the cities. I'm guessing. I think they're close to the cities, I'm guessing.
Especially if we bring some back, if we bring some back for Carroll, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Okay.
How do I get my three wheeler up there?
Like the incumbent mic?
Yeah.
They're already balanced, so you don't have to hang them up there. That's to balance your two wheeler bike and not fall over while you're doing it. So.
I can see where this would be a big asset to have.
Thank you for the price, thank you for the nice and, you can, and I would be willing to donate a couple signs. It's nice to have signs directing bikers if there are some, so we can put those at different spots. Little arrow, fix-it station two miles ahead, something like that.
What kind of commitment the city would make?
Well, what are you asking for?
Two of them?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred dollars? We, we can afford that, I'm correct?
We can afford it, sure. If the bike group wants to help pay for some, that's always a good thing.
I think.
I know, like we donate to bike bash.
Yeah, the bike bash.
In excess, we make sure, to make sure that we have enough of the pumps.
Right.
You know, what about, you know, say everyone discusses like Terry wants to, but you go out and fundraise for one, city to match for one.
That sounds a fair deal to me.
I don't know, that's, I gotta talk to the council here, but I mean, that way you'd get some community involvement, that's what we're always looking for, is community involvement. And we did the same thing with the basketball hoops down there for men's clubs, so, I mean, the bikers do bring money into this town.
Yes, they do.
So I mean, like I said, you get, you get enough money to raise another for one. I'll make the motion that we buy one.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Was that a motion or is that a pending motion?
I'll make it a motion. I'm not scared of it.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay. So this is a motion to purchase one and the group purchased one?
Yep, that's, it's gonna be hinged on you guys.
Right.
Match up one, okay? That's what, that'll get everybody involved in it.
That sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Hus?
Yes.
Woltman?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks to all bikers. Can we get a little help from Weber to help put some cement in to bolt them down?
That's gonna volunteer.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you, it's nice to know you're supporting.
Yes, you are. Okay, resolution sixteen sixty.
Okay, this is, yeah, this is the resolution then to approve the contract then for the two thousand seventeen street improvement project, so everything's in order, all the bonds and all the insurances and everything are in order. And the contract has been executed for the bid amount, so everything's in order.
Do you have a motion on sixteen sixty? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
To approve it.
Okay. That's what I thought. Woltman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, seventeen street improvement, we have a change order number one.
Yeah, and then this is that change order number one to reduce that, eliminate that mantle. And it's thirty thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars cost reduction on that.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Hus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Woltman?
Yes.
Okay, sixteen sixty-one, we're done with Sunset Drive?
Yes, so this is gonna be a two-part deal. About, the first thing would be to have the council pass this resolution then, which formally accepts the work. We can't do anything with the special assessment stuff until after the work is formally accepted. So this would accept the work, we still are holding their retainage and that won't go out until the next council meeting. Okay? But everything is in order.
What motion on sixteen sixty-one?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Woltman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Okay, sixteen sixty-two is our final.
Yeah, now this is the one where I need to talk to you a little bit. If we can look at the big sheet, 'cause this is the one that, that formally levies those special assessments. Okay? I would tell you that Reggie Werbeck brought this to my attention about this additional easement that, that we got from him. And that was a twenty-two foot easement on the, it's on the south intersection by his garage, you know, it's the east side of the, of the road there by his garage, and that's twenty-two feet additional. And the city has paid then for the, for the feet in front of the easements that we have. So this is that additional cost. And the additional cost, three thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. City's total cost on that is then actually the bottom four rows of, of the cost there from the six hundred on down for the city's portion, plus we have this thing called the deficiency. And the deficiency is just that the city can levy a special assessment of up to twenty-five percent of the value of the property. Okay? If the amount of the assessment is more than twenty-five percent of the value of the property, it's held as a deficiency. Okay? It means the city's gotta pay for it upfront, but it still hangs out there on the property. So there's a few of these properties there, like one that would come to mind is St. Millinockers. They have a vacant lot. And should they ever put anything on that vacant lot to increase the value, the, the deficiency could come due so long as, as it's not more than twenty-five percent of the value of the property. Okay? So things can come due later on after construction might happen. Okay? But, so the city's share of upfront money would be that eighteen thousand one forty-eight and then those, the bottom four items from the, from the six hundred on down, which is about eleven thousand dollars, I think. About twenty-seven thousand dollars was gonna be this city's share, which is, which was where we kinda started, we started at twenty-three.
No surprises. And that's gonna be added into that big?
We're, yeah, so basically we're financing it internally right now, but it will be added into the big debt issuance for, for, yeah, as far as our long-term financing.
You hear the motion?
Yes, sixteen sixty-two.
This is the one that, yeah, levies those assessments.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Woltman?
Yes.
Okay, health insurance.
Yes.
You can keep your doctor?
Yes, you can keep your doctor. If you like your health plan, you can keep your health.
Mine would have to.
Yeah, we just got those in the mail.
Uh, let's start out, if we can look on, it's on page thirty-seven, I just wanna walk through a few things with you. And actually, page thirty-seven doesn't tell you too much other than the boxed in number on the lower right-hand part of the page saying that that's the percent increase of nineteen point eight nine percent. So these would be the, the current rates then versus the renewal rates on the existing policy. Let's flip to the next page. Kinda tells you where this nineteen point eight percent comes from. And what they're saying is that for all pools, all small pools, the base rate change was six percent. Our risk level change was, is that twelve point two five percent. And we'll take a look at this here in, in a bit, we've had a couple of rough years. Demographics, where our demographic change is actually looking a little bit better and we got a little younger. And I would tell you that the renewal still has Brian Sorenson and his family on it and as opposed to Cameron. So, you know, we replaced an older family with the, with a younger single person. But family composition, we also took on some additional dependents over the course of the year. And they're, of course, they're eligible to be added, but that, that's part of the additional cost there too, in total. When you add those things up, it doesn't add up to nineteen point eight, but they got a fancy formula. In total, nineteen point eight nine percent. So let's take a look at the next page, and this is, this is the claims experience. So, and they, they're looking back two years on our history. Just looking at the top part of the page in the, in the far right, that over the past, for the past current year, we had three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of total covered charges, previous year was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. But one thing in particular that they really pay a lot of attention to is the bottom half of the page, is claims of more than ten thousand dollars. And our total claims last year, big claims were actually a little higher than they were this year, but we had three claims, three lives last year that exceeded that ten thousand dollars. This year, we had six lives that exceeded ten thousand dollars. And that is part of the reason then why the history and the anticipated future use is we get that, that bad rating, that twelve percent rating on our usage, you know, based on the past, but then also looking at the number of larger claims that we've got. So, you know, that's the rationale, it doesn't help to soften the blow about another twenty percent, realizing again, last year we had thirty percent. So it was thirty percent last year, twenty percent this year. If we can take a look at the legal size page, there are a few options. And, you know, not that any of them are terrific, but there are a few options. And left, so the left side of the page is gonna define our policy and then the first couple columns then, next couple columns to the left, left of the page are our current policy and what the renewal would be. And I wish I would've colored, copied those for you in color. You get to the middle of the page though, in the far right, three columns on the right, these are ACA compliant plans. So they're, they're plans that are compliant with Obamacare and remembering that we have a grandfathered plan. So the, the three to the right again are, are the gold, silver and bronze levels of, of policies. And you look down at the bottom, just gotten right to the chase about what the, what the premiums are. For the gold plan, there's a thirty-seven percent increase for the silver plan, it was eleven percent, and for the bronze, it was sixteen point eight percent. So looking at that, you know, the only one that, that really has any type of feasibility really at all would be to take a look at that silver plan. And it's roughly consistent with what we have now, with some, some significant changes though. That co-insurance right now on our policy is, is twenty percent and that would go to thirty percent in-network. The out-of-pocket maximum, which right now for individuals is four thousand, would go to seven thousand one fifty. And for families, that doubles, it's fourteen-three. The, that's the area where we could potentially have really big hits to the amount that the city partially self-funds. For those folks who, who would meet that out-of-pocket maximum, the city actually is contributing several thousand dollars towards that partial self-funding. Okay? The other, the other big things here deal with office copays, where our office copay now is twenty dollars, this would go to forty dollars for an office copay for physicians and non-PCP, it's non-primary care. So any specialist or anything like that is eighty dollars. And one of the biggest things on that then is chiropractors. We pay a lot of, a lot of chiropractors, but they are considered to be non-primary care. So we pay a higher, higher rate of, of copay on that. Emergency room right now, we pay a hundred and fifty dollar copay and this is a major change on that, that it's not a copay, it's deductible plus thirty percent co-insurance. Just looking, looking at those costs, the cost of the plan is slightly less than what our, our proposed renewal would be, but again, there's some, there's some impacts there on, on what a partial self-funding would be. Any questions on any of the ACA compliant plans?
So when do we have to, when is, when is our contract up with this?
Contract is up on the, yeah, you know, it's a, it's a calendar year, calendar year policy, okay? Not a contract. So we're not obligated for the next year. But what they do say is you have, you have to renew by the fifteenth of December. If you wanna change, you gotta do that by the fifteenth of December, if you want to change to another Wellmark policy, I mean. Do that by the fifteenth of December. If we, if we wanna renew as is, we do that by the fifteenth of December, but it's not a contract and you can opt out then at any time thereafter. So if we really wanna look at some other options, and we'll talk a little bit about self-funding more of it, you know, if you wanna look at that option, where we actually, we'd actually need to fill out applications and everything, it'd be a lengthy process. What we would do is, you know, renew, or if you wanna change, we could change, but we would renew now and then work through the application process on any of these other ones and then you can opt out later, opt out of Wellmark later.
But once we get out of the grandfathered one, we can't go back into it?
That's true. And it's, you know, our, the biggest thing about having a grandfathered plan is that you're still rated. And, you know, if you, if you have a good group rating, it's a great thing. You know, we've had a couple of, couple of rough years. Now, they always say that, that health insurance claims are cyclical and boy, I've seen that to be the case too. That you can have a couple of bad years and, and then you have several average years. And, 'cause they'll always talk about that, about self-insuring your own, you know, 'cause things will be great for a few years and then you just get nailed with big, with big claims.
What's your recommendation to the council?
Well, I didn't want to go through a couple of other things yet here too, 'cause there, just to know that we do have, looked at some other options and it's on page forty-one. An HSA is a health savings account, which is a, a completely different really type of policy where somebody, whether it's the employee or the city or a combination of people are funding this health savings account. And then the patient is responsible from dollar one, they're responsible for all costs until they reach their deductible. And a lot of places are going to this, it's, it's a little less expensive in some regards. And if you have a very young workforce, it has been a really good way to go for a lot of folks. Because they, you know, of course, young folks don't utilize services very much. As you get older and you start to utilize services a lot more, then you're probably exceeding the amount, you're spending more on your health than what's put in your health savings account, so. Any, is there any interest in health savings accounts that?
Pell is switching over there from what I understand and talking Carroll, as Pell is going on, health savings account. Where we work, where I work, that's a health savings account. What the company does, they match dollar for dollar for the first seven hundred and fifty dollars towards your deductible that goes into this health savings account. That stays with you, you don't have to spend it. So like a lot of, a lot of the guys are, are doing is that they'll get their, get through a few years that they don't have to use that money, that money go, continues to build up towards their deductible. So if they do have a major, they gotta do that, it's health savings account, so. The way, the way everybody's talking, this is gonna be the.
And there's a lot of things you could use a health savings account for.
Right.
You know, you can pay your chiropractor out of there. You can.
You can buy aspirin.
Buy aspirin.
Yep.
You could use it to fund long-term care.
Yep, and your tire, yep, that's all part of that.
There's a whole list of things you could use it for.
Yes, now the union throws a wrench into anything that we, that we would wanna do. Our, our benefits are still stipulated in the union deal. That says we have a five hundred dollar policy and it has a ten percent copay and, and we have purchased this policy now and of course, we partial self-fund down to that difference. So.
We still should have options that we're able to talk about it once we go into negotiations.
Sure, you know, I agree. Because any, any changes to the employees' health insurance benefits need to be bargained.
Yeah, but I'm completely fine with that, but.
But we'd have to do it before the fifteenth, right?
No, and actually, no, and it, and it wouldn't happen, 'cause, you know, we're, we'll be ready to start bargaining here with the union anytime, but, but it won't happen that quickly. And, you know, looking at different other providers, other types of plans, anything like that, that takes time too. So, you know, really, we're in a position where.
Providers are all getting out of the business because.
That's what it is, that's, you're exactly right, that's the whole, there is no competition up there.
Yeah.
The most of them don't wanna be up.
I would like to show you this at least a little bit, it's on page forty-two. I'll be talking about the, the column to the right of the shaded in column, Plan Two. This is, is a basically a fully, fully self- This is, is basically a fully, fully self-funded plan, okay? As in, the city has all of the costs initially, okay? Now, there is a, a high-dollar stopgap, stop-loss insurance, and in this case, it's forty thousand dollars for the group. So the city funds that forty thousand dollars. We have this, this insurance company or a third-party administrator, they administer it for us, they take care of all of the claims. It functions just like a regular insurance company, but the city's responsible for the first forty thousand dollars worth of claims before any of the insurance kicks in. Okay? So that's, that's a completely different notion than what we've ever looked at before, and the rule of thumb is that small groups don't look at fully self-fund, fully funding themselves. There's just too much variability in how everything goes. But, but this also, you know, everything over that forty thousand dollar stopgap insurance policy, you know, the, the insurance company then picks up. But, and you, if we're at forty thousand dollars, you can see what our claims have been, three hundred and some thousand dollars. They, they gave us these, these rates down there at the bottom, and the agent even called them teaser rates. He said, you gotta do paper applications from everybody and expect that the rate would go up, and it can go up dramatically. But it may very well be something that you'd at least like to have a price on.
I'm not really in favor of the self-funded thing at all.
It's, it gets to be a lot more risk, you know, that's very true.
The total premium per person, right? Like ninety-four seventy?
That, that's a monthly premium for the, for the whole city, and, you know, our renewal rate was thirteen thousand, so. So, you know, it's saying that it's, it's a little bit cheaper, but, like...
It's not when you, when you get a club, the first forty.
Well, you're funding that, that first forty out of that nine thousand every month. That's, that shows that kind of on the next page as far as how the, how the premiums are allocated.
In ten months, you'd have the forty-five.
Yeah. It's the biggest uncertainty here, and you don't know it until you take the applications, it's just what the premium would be, because I guarantee it, it would be higher than what they have quoted us. We are at the, kind of the point, though, where we gotta do something with either a renewal or a, or a change in a Wellmark policy by the fifteenth of December.
But you can renew and then turn around and...
You turn around?
Do a self, or do a... Come up with a new plan after that.
Right, true. Like I said, it's not, it's not a contract, but we would be, we're not committed to it, but it is, need to get things renewed.
We could do, continue our plan as-is and then change it to a high-deductible plan?
Yep.
For the HSA?
Yeah, we sure can, we can look at those things.
You think that's what we ought to do, Wayne?
Yeah, we gotta, well, we gotta lock into something. Then we gotta really sit down and take some, get some hard numbers to figure out how we're gonna, what our best, because the way we're going, it's just not...
It's easy.
No, it's, it's, it's gonna be all part of the negotiations, and like I said, it's, there's gonna be some tough decisions to be made.
What happened at the union and the city getting together? The union, they were gonna cut our healthcare costs, the meetings we had?
Well, we've done that. We've had our health insurance, our Labor Management Health Insurance Committee.
And what has come of that?
We've reported it back to the council, Mayor, did you not remember the report?
Yeah, nothing good came back.
Very little, I mean, as, as far as agreed-upon changes and that type of stuff, we, what we ended up doing was, was reviewing different types of policies, looking at some of the options that are really out there, you know. What's, you know, the employees, you know, of course, they're happy where they're at. They got a policy.
That's, that's the whole thing about that is right now, is that, from what your report was, I took the fact that they don't want to change, they want that, they want that insurance.
Yes.
Good insurance.
Yeah, which is good, good insurance, but we've gotta find a way to make it economically feasible for the city.
Cost-effective.
Yes. Get the most bang for our buck.
Yeah.
And right now, it's only getting worse, you know, like I said. You're looking at, what, fifty percent raise the last two years?
Two years, yeah.
And it's not done yet.
I think we just have to go ahead and renew the one you're on, and then...
We gotta...
Then we've gotta get some numbers, good numbers together and see what we want to do.
And I'm not so sure that doesn't take a special meeting.
Mr. Murphy just said...
Yeah, first of the year is special meeting...
Well, we gotta take...
Special meeting months.
Yeah, for about the whole month of January.
Yeah, but I, because like I said, we gotta take a look and actually see what the dollar cost per employee, how we can save it, how we can improve protection, but not be stuck for the whole bill, and get some cooperation in with the employees, so.
I know different, when I worked for seed companies and stuff like that, they always told us, you know, you don't have to turn everything in, you know, when you go to the, you know, sometimes you better, of course, when you got a policy like this, they're better off to turn it in.
Sure.
We wasn't, you know...
It's not cost them anything.
No, but we was better off to pay the deductible, you know, ourselves, and, you know, just, rather than having them raise the rates.
But you don't have no skin in the game, it doesn't...
You ask for the moon.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I really like the HSA thing, but I'll make a motion that we could stick with the plan we're at for now.
Second?
I'll do it.
Roll call.
Holtman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Thank him.
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Okay, city attorney?
You had asked me to check with our folks that we talked to last year, and...
Before we get started, I'll address Nikki. The reason, when we talked about having a city attorney here all the time, Erin was, when she was working for the city, we were paying her family health insurance. Correct me if I'm wrong.
True, yeah.
And that was running, what, close to?
Probably twelve, yeah, ten, twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars. And she wasn't at the meetings a lot, so we brought it up to her attention. That's why we brought, brought it on, that we wanted somebody here. Now, we did talk about making concessions, when I say concessions, like if we think there's something to come up, we could have it on one, one meeting a month, or instead of having a lawyer here for two meetings, you know, kind of flat on what we need to do. Again, a lot of that can be done over the, over the phone with whoever we got. Another thing that we gotta take a look at is, if we're gonna get a lawyer with conflict of interest, I mean, I don't know, further away is better, or what? I mean, is Dennison, I guess, you know, that, that's my concern, and not, not, not...
It's valid concern.
Because, you know, you do a lot of business around here, and there's a lot of times that we have issues, and you'd have to step aside just because of that. So we need to take a thought, think about how we want to handle that, you know, is order bill too close, Dennison too far, we gotta make a judgment.
But Dennison, they make the kind of...
They don't, yeah.
They don't want to do it.
Or who, Fort Dodge, was that?
Oh, yeah, we're looking at Fort Dodge and Storm Lake.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, that's, that's something you need to take into consideration on that.
So can I ask a question then? So what is the, you told me what Erin costs, what is the current attorney cost of? I mean, the system we have right now, where the attorney is here, not necessarily, I'm not talking about the current attorney, but the practice right now where the attorney is present at every council meeting, plus, plus we farm out when we have anything special come up, right? We hire another attorney. How many city councils of our size, I guess my question is, have a city-county attorney at every meeting? I, I don't know, do they?
Hit or miss, you know, from what we, we've seen from other communities and then talking with, with city attorneys, you know, some of them do make a point to attend all of the council meetings, because it's at the desire of the council, you know. The, the, some of them do, some of them don't, some of them have regular, regularly scheduled so often, you know, like Janet does, one of them, once a quarter. You know, he wants to make sure that he gets there once a quarter, you know, so there's, I guess it can run the whole, the whole gamut.
And so the cost comparison?
Just the hourly fee, you know, and just a rough, you know, for about any of them, you figure a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
But you certainly don't have a, a need for a county, for a city attorney at every meeting, do you? Two meetings a month, you need an attorney's opinion?
I don't know, we've used Cody a lot.
Because she's sitting here, you couldn't follow up with an email? And a lot of times, doesn't she say to you, I'll check on that and I'll get back to you?
Yeah, because we have, you know, sometime, you know, we have questions that...
But I think we're able to get more accomplished, because we do have a attorney, you know, sitting here.
Some of that can, is just in your planning, though, I mean, if you, if you know what's coming up on the agenda and you, and there's a need or a feeling that you're gonna need to have someone here.
Right.
If somebody comes from a long way.
That's different than, and every meeting kind of thing, you know.
An awful lot can be accomplished through email, it seems to me, with some kind of a retainer fee.
If we get a guy from Storm Lake, he's gonna charge us a hundred and fifty bucks an hour from the time he leaves till the time he gets home, correct, Cody? So it's a five hundred bucks every time we have one here for a council meeting, that's expensive.
I have billed that way, I billed for what I'm sitting here in the council chamber.
But these guys are good.
They go travel for nothing.
No.
For this size of community, that's not a big expense when we're being so frugal about a lot of other things.
Well, I think we could operate on the fact that if we knew something was gonna be, that we needed advice, we would have him come, otherwise, we wouldn't have him come. We should be able to plan that, I would think.
Sure, you know, we've, we've operated it both ways before. We, we have ran for years without a city attorney here, too, you know, but like what he was saying, when we were paying a retainer to Erin, it just made sense to have her.
And what is the current cost again?
Yo' bag.
Forty dollars an hour.
So, I mean, in a yearly, what is, do we have any kind of...
Well, he has my bills for, through November, just a second.
So, yeah, seventy-five, eight, eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's been, on average, probably, it's less than ten thousand dollars for the year, but I don't know, to the dollar, what it is, I send in the bill every month.
But a new one from far away would be expensive as all getup to have them come for each meeting.
Yeah, I might say we had to have...
Through the end of November, it was sixty-nine.
I don't think you need one at every meeting.
And I know why we do it with Erin.
We probably don't, I mean...
We all know why we had it with Erin, because we wanted her to earn her money, but...
But again, then, you farm out a lot of things, right?
Yes.
Yes, we do our...
Bonding, sewer, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, you know, and...
It won't be farming out.
Well, I guess I...
The conflicts of interest is what...
Oh, yeah, on the conflicts, yeah, because on, on project work and bonding work and stuff, we, you know, we've used Bob, Bob Justin, Dorsey, and Whitney for, for those for a long time. It's, I think that's...
And you're not gonna get a local city attorney, even if they come in once a month or once a quarter, that's not gonna be worked.
That's specialty work, yeah.
Somebody locally.
So, but I did talk with the three firms that we spoke with last year, we brought them in for interviews last year, and this was Crimmens out of Fort Dodge, and then Dave Janet out of Storm Lake, and Rick Frank from Dennison. Rick did say, you know, Rick's got the, got a cabin here on the lake and has that, it's right out next to the East End Restaurant property, he would, citing a potential conflict on that yet, you know, if, if there's looking at development out there, he said he may not be the best choice for the city.
That'd be for sure.
Both Crimmens and, and Dave Janet, though, are available, and with Crimmens, he just got a new partner, it's actually son-in-law, and throughout all that, then they're, they are available then to cover council meetings then as needed also. And Dave Janet's schedule would allow him to attend council meetings here, too. He doesn't have a regularly scheduled Monday night obligation, okay? So you, we could have him attend as much as you'd like.
Is either one better suit for city business, ordinance, is one the stronger?
Boy, I'd feel comfortable with both of them, because they, because they do, do have significant municipal experience, and they all represent a handful of communities.
You hear a lot of good things about Janet.
Yeah, we, so I got hooked up with the fellow from Fort Dodge through the city administrator in, in Fort Dodge, he just had glowing things to say about him. But other than that, really, I don't know him too well. We do know Dave Janet, and Dave would, he'd do a fine job.
The council needs to pick one.
Yes.
Would be a good option.
Head smart, tell us, Dave.
All right.
Jerry, again. Maybe I'll say, we've had it.
I'm, I'm comfortable with Janet myself, I know he has experience in that, he's been around a long time. He can, that's, that's maybe the difference, what they're more experienced at, you know, so, I don't know him what in Fort Dodge.
Well, he probably understands, too, that we don't need anybody all the, you know, even understand that.
Like I say, he was willing to work with us, basically, about whatever you would deserve.
I think Janet, too.
Janet seems out of motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mulher?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Hus?
Yes.
Thank him.
Yes.
Wiltman?
Yes. Okay, the city administrator report.
Um, yeah, just the, the issue here on vertical corrugated metal siding, and hopefully folks had a chance to get out and take a look at, at this, on that Marion Godwin, Marion, is, is installing the, has been working on this, this big addition to her house out there in Crest Park. Getting to the end, and time for, to put the siding on. The siding that's on is a metal siding, but it's in a vertical pattern. Now, did folks get a chance to see it?
I go by with the buzz quite often, but I didn't...
You know, these are, that's the picture of it, the top one. So, just that they are seamless steel, each one of those between the ribs is an individual piece put together. Now, it becomes an issue because we have a, a prohibition on using what's described as vertical corrugated metal siding, or vertical, we just can't use vertical corrugated metal, doesn't even call it siding, but vertical corrugated metal.
But this is not...
It's, it's been brought to our attention, yeah.
But that's not what this is, right? That's what you're saying.
Uh, that's the, the definition question, so, yeah.
It has a pattern on it.
And no, Daryl has, Daryl's got an opinion on it, and...
Well, I, I drove around town, may I show you a few things? There's actually a lot of properties that have vertical metal, it's like, whether you call it corrugated or whatever, uh, there's even some that are wood that look just like it. So my whole thing now is, you know, what do we do with this? You know, we say we don't want it, and I see you've got some metal up here.
That's, yeah, Rick had brought that in. Those are the samples, but...
I brought it up as examples, because I'll show you some pictures here in a minute. When zoning, put this in the ordinance, what they wanted to stop is, we were afraid there was gonna be a lot of garages and stuff built, you know, pole barn style, whatever you wanna call it, you know, like this. So, you know, that's why that got put in there, vertical corrugated metal, don't want it. You know, you can put it on a roof, which we've seen all over, but we didn't want it, want houses. And like that picture you got there, I tried to do pictures of the same thing, but, you know, it didn't quite come out, but, you know, when you drive by it, you know, because this does the same thing, it's, it is a house siding, though. So what, you know, and they actually look the same, so how do we say you do...
That looks nicer, though.
What, I agree. When, when it's on the house... Wh- when it's, when it's on the house, you know, I mean, it looks almost identical. So, where we go with this ordinance is, I guess is my question, I mean.
But? That horse has left the barn, as far as I'm concerned, if you've got somewhere that's out there, how do you do this select?
Right.
We've got, we've got people out there that we said they couldn't put any vertical siding on like this, and that, that's why I stopped this project, you know, you're not supposed to do this, well, yet.
It's been done.
Can, can we, yeah, yes, there's, there's actually quite a few around.
Yeah.
So are you saying we need to change the ordinance? Or?
Well.
Or, I mean, doesn't the ordinance really speak for itself, saying we don't want that, but, because, is the ordinance actually talking about vertical siding, or just, uh, what the vertical?
Machine shed steel.
Machine shed steel.
Yeah, how do you destroy, how do you distinguish the two, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, we, we did. It's vertical metal, what, what the hell did you call it?
Vertical corrugated metal.
Corrugated metal.
Okay.
Okay, so, the other one is, as you said, a house siding.
Well, the only thing is, if this is all done already, how you gonna?
Driving by at twenty mile an hour, and you can watch this slide, slide, slideshow going if you like, I mean, can you see the picture at all?
Oh, you know, and you could see.
You drive by, you can't tell the difference. So I guess that's what I'm saying, is what the heck do we do with this ordinance, I mean?
So, so, correctly, fair enough, was it so much that the ordinance, 'cause of the siding, or the type of building that was gonna be put up with that kind of siding? What was the real intent of it? The building itself, or the siding itself?
Well, when the ordinance was put in?
Yeah.
It was to stop people from.
Using corrugated.
Corrugated metal.
Metal. Or barns.
Vertical corrugated metal.
That buil- that building they wanna tear down, the city put that on there.
'Cause one of these pictures is actually even a wood problem.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's a plywood's, uh, panel, it's not even individual pieces, it's plywood panel.
The other thing, as far as our zoning goes, is real important, is that the prohibition only applies to residential areas.
Oh.
Okay.
So I'm safe with my building.
Absolutely, if you're in a commercial or an industrial area, they're fine.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Pardon?
How old is it so in this? That looks nice to me.
Yeah, me too.
What's the ordinance, two thousand, or?
We already did that in two thousand.
It, it improved the looks of her house.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, this was just the, the other one that was, was pointed out to us, I guess, right away, it's a new construction from this year, it's on Provost.
And it looks nice.
And that's, that is using then the same material that's.
The dictionary defines corrugated as shaped into alternating panel, grooves, and ridges. They both do that, so.
They do.
Now,
There's nothing we can do.
If it's a new and, new thing, new siding, we, we need to maybe.
Well, I think, yeah, it, it may be more of a, of an issue about, um, having, having a different, a better definition of what it is that, that you'd like to see or not, you know, I guess the question is, uh, you know, to, do, do you think that that looks like corrugated siding, or is, and that's something that you wanna avoid as a look, you know, the material probably is not the traditional barn siding, you know, it's not the.
No. I mean, there's a big difference.
Is that, is the key word corrugated?
Corrugated?
Yeah.
Corrugated, yeah, it's.
Is that the key word, uh?
It is the key word, if you're.
Well, going by the definition, definition of it though, they both, they both are, so.
And don't define how many ridges there are per, per panel. They're both corrugated, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah.
Whether it has one ridge or there are ten in it, you know.
Sure, yeah, they're both vertical corrugated metal. So how do we say you can do one, you can't do the other, I guess is.
Yeah, again, if, if the intention truly is you don't want barn steel, I mean, it,
Yeah.
you can change things, so you say you don't want basically the equivalent of barn steel, but, you know, the question still is, you know.
But then why, yeah? If, if that's all you're going for is the look, well, the two look the same, I mean, like I say, you, you can drive by them at twenty mile an hour and they both look the same. But, yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, is how do we, how, how do we distinguish between the two?
Sure.
I agree, there's nothing wrong with it.
One other thing, Al?
Yep.
Now, it's my understanding that, this is a product that is also a vertical siding in vinyl, and it's my understanding if we'd have put a vinyl product on, this would've been acceptable.
You wouldn't have an issue, would you?
Right.
Yeah.
And this is gonna be the same exact look as that.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it just makes sense to change something there, I mean, 'cause it doesn't look bad to me.
Well, I guess, and part of the question is really, are, are you saying that you, you want to try to govern an appearance, or are you governing the material? 'Cause I think that's a, an important distinction.
That's what I was trying to say. That's why I asked about the appearance, what, you worried about the?
Well, I, I might.
But, but I'm just saying, put the ordinance down about the, because you think a quick pole barn will go up for a garage?
That's what we're after.
The only way that I, I can think of right now, without investigating it more, is to maybe disting- distinguish the two is, with what they're doing, what you see on the table here, that your pictures are, I mean, you don't see the fasteners. On this, your fasteners would be seen.
You don't see them.
Anytime you use the so-called barn steel, if that's what you wanna call it, the fasteners are always right over the top. That stuff and the stuff in the picture, the stuff on their house, we don't see the fasteners. That's the only two distinguishes that I can think of between the two right now. Now, like I said, in the pictures here, there's one that is a wood vertical siding. There again, your fasteners would be seen, they're on the face. But it is wood, it's not metal, so I, you know, we just, you know, yeah, I mean, we've told a lot of people they can't put vertical metal on. So how do we?
So you, you also see a couple of those.
Yes, you can.
Those garages around here, then where they've taken that and turned it sideways, and it's not vertical anymore, and they, you know, and it's been accepted.
'Cause there's a picture or two of that in there.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead, Vic.
Well, it's just that nowadays siding has changed tremendously.
Everything's changing, yeah.
You know, we got cement siding, somebody else has got this, or whatever, and the, and the technology has changed, and it looks better, and quite frankly, I'm sure that, that the ordinance was looking to prevent, quite frankly, the buildings, some of the buildings on Main Street, you didn't want that look in the residential. But you can't stick by an ordinance forever, they have to be changed, they have to be adapted, good grief, you know, this community has not stuck to ordinances very good. I would guess probably ten or fifteen years before, you know, if you went back twenty-five years, they weren't paying much attention to ordinances, look at some of the homes, and I'm talking residential here, look at some of the homes that were built, that would not be allowed to be built today. Um, setbacks and all of that stuff, and I just think you have to modify, you can't just stick with some ordinance that no longer works. Now, how you're gonna rewrite it, I don't know, but, you know, you certainly don't wanna keep trying to keep people from improving properties.
Exactly.
That should not be what our goal is.
And you do have to change with the times, and with the technology that comes with the times.
We can discuss this corrugated anytime we want, but, uh, to let her continue, I think is the only way we can do it, otherwise, we gotta make the other people take that siding off, Cody? How would that go in court?
I don't know that you can go back now and make them take it off, I mean, if you wanna go through, and I think that's the problem you have with this one, is trying to say, well, now, no, you can't, when. And the other thing, I think, your ordn- your zoning ordinance requires the appointment of a zoning administrator that would initially make the decisions on these types of things, and it's my understanding, the council hasn't appointed one ever, or if they have, they've long since expired. And so one of the things that needs to be done is the zoning administrator needs to be appointed, because there's a process in the zoning ordinance for handling these types of things as they come up, but there's no person appointed to do that right now.
What, what we've done over the years is we have a, a separate building permit portion of our code, and it says enforcement of the building permit section falls to the building inspector and the mayor and the city clerk. So that's what we've always used it, but as far as having a, one definitive person as a zoning administrator in the zoning code, I, I was searching through minutes, I didn't find that it's, anybody's ever been appointed as a zoning administrator, we certainly have a building inspector.
And the building inspector and the zone, and the clerk and the mayor are only appointed to do, govern issues dealing with the building permit process. Anything dealing with the zoning chapter has to be done with a zoning administrator, and that's where right now, there's a little bit of a vacancy.
Well, and obviously, there's been a problem, or we wouldn't have all these places that already have it up.
Reg?
How did we let it get this far? I guess she's, they've been putting.
On these?
They've been putting this up for five days, and the whole one side of her house is done, and could we even consider expecting her to take it down?
I don't think anybody suggested as of yet, that's got them off.
I, you know.
Nobody said a word that it's gotta come off.
But, but we stopped the project.
We just stopped the process of it until we get it figured out, that's all we did, yes.
But, Daryl, what, what about the others that did this, you just didn't notice them, or?
Well, what's happened in, what, what's happened with both of these projects that are in this picture is the project, a lot of these projects that I do, they drag on for sometimes a year and a half. Both of these particular projects, they were completely done, they were waiting for siding. Okay, to me, siding is no big deal normally, so I signed off them and turned all my paperwork into scat. And all of a sudden, bang, here they both come up like this, and, you know, then I don't know it until somebody complains.
But then, that's my point, the process we have in place, it didn't work.
You know, it, it.
I mean, but here again, here again, it's.
She's being penalized for something because somebody noticed it and somebody else didn't, I mean, it just doesn't seem consistent.
Did somebody complain?
Yes, there was complaints. Somebody was told they couldn't put on vertical siding, metal siding. So how come this, how can this person do it? So that's why we're, that, that's where we're here.
Was there a discussion then after that other one was done with the identical material?
Never heard about it.
Where's that at?
My understanding is not identical material.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
This, no, this is metal, Provost.
Yeah, these are, these are, this is the two we're talking about.
This is Provost, this is today.
And it's.
The, the question comes down to is, uh, I think the council needs to let her continue to finish the siding, and we'll work on the, redo the code, make everybody happy.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, no, they were never told they gotta take it off.
No, no, I, no, I just think.
That I know of, anyway.
I think she's, she should be able to continue it too.
Somehow we need to try and educate also, the general public, contractors, whatever the case may be, 'cause there again, you know, me being one guy, can't keep watching every single property, I don't drive around the lake every single day checking every building project, I mean, I, I can't, I can't do that for the little bit that I make. But some of this, you know, has to fall on the homeowners and the contractors that are doing the project to understand what the ordinances are, what they can and can't do.
And also, can I say, you know, I was just gonna say that corrugated never has come up in dealing with the people putting the siding on, you know, I'm told it's a, I'm, I'm just saying that, I was told it was a seamless steel, wood grain, board and baton.
Sure, I understand.
Corrugated was never a word, so this is a surprise, I, you know, I would hate the council to think that, oh, we thought we were gonna get one through here, had no idea. And then with another building being identical material, you know, it is a communication problem and between how people are reading it, understanding of course why that was put in there, to prevent the, the other type of corrugated, but had no idea this was considered corrugated.
No, I, I understand, I understand a hundred percent, and that's why, that's why I want the answers also, is how, how do we continue to say no on one, and yet keep going with this, and you drive by, they both look the same, so. And then, of course, we got the people that were told no, which, I don't know how many people were told no they couldn't do it, and did something else, but.
So did the, the people that were told no and did it, do, does their hardware show?
Well, I, I don't know, if, if they were told no, if they were told they, they couldn't do it, they'd put something else on. Most people have gone to some sort of a horizontal regular house siding, that I know of.
But a homeowner building a new house or remodeling, they don't know all the ordinances, they come to the city hall to find out what they're supposed to do.
I can, yeah, you can never.
Well, I would say, we need to make a sheet and hand it to the guy that's doing the inspection, he's able to hand it to the contractor, whoever, you know.
Yeah, when, when they, when they get a, they get a building permit packet when they.
Right.
When they, uh, uh, come to get the application, it has all the regulations in it. Okay? And it, it would have the thing about cor- vertical corrugated metal, but, uh, yeah, it's, you know, it's, I don't know if it's ten pages, but, you know, I suppose it's, it's five, six, seven pages of, of regulation and.
Angle. You would've been all right.
Sure.
That's, you know, and, and I didn't bring that up, I was waiting to see if somebody would, because as I was driving around town, there's numerous properties that have it at a forty-five or an angle.
I think there's some things we need to.
So, you know, I mean.
You know, if it looks good, leave it alone.
The one thing we've always found.
White, he's white, the horse is already out of the barn.
Well, the one thing we've always found with any of these ordinances, and what happens is, it's not a problem until somebody finds that gray area.
Makes it.
Okay, then now what do we do? You know, I mean, you can never have ordinances that are perfect and gonna fit areas, every scenario, it's not gonna happen.
The options of what kind of siding we get, what it looks like, how, that's doubled, three times as many, you've got more choices than that, you have paint sometimes, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, that's just it, I mean.
So, so again, like I said, I think we should, we gotta go with what it is, and we gotta.
Can you come up with some recommendations at the council, what is and isn't it, or?
What, what I, like I said, the only thing I've thought of so far to distinguish the two, and it does go on to say in ordinances about a residential in nature siding, is that how it's ordered, I believe.
Well, and this part deals with, with accessory buildings, and, and that it's gotta be similar in residential character to the.
Yeah, residential nature or something like that, well, this stuff would be residential a neighbor, where the other barn steel, if you wanna call it that, is not. But like I said, the only thing I can think of in short notice is the barn steel would always have the fasteners showing, you know, they would be face nailed, so to speak. Whereas this stuff they're putting on, and, and what I've seen, most of what I've seen is, you don't see the fasteners.
So you distinguish it that way then? And I think the word corrugated is a big word, because they never mentioned that to you.
No, and it, that's residential siding, right, it's in the pamphlet, it's residential, so it just never is referred to as corrugated.
I don't think it's, I, I don't think we should hold her up from.
No, I don't, oh, absolutely not. Yeah, keep going on your construction, we're gonna work on some different wordings.
We need to work on some wordings.
But, uh, as, as we look at process here, you know, process still, I, I think now it probably falls back to planning and zoning, you know, we do have Planning and Zoning Commission that, uh, that wants, is charged with working on these things, and, and that would be another one for the.
Well, actually, really, you go to the city and you see all these houses, rural houses, and they all look alike, to me, I think that looks worse than.
When, when we were shopping, this is a residential brochure that we got from Shavers, and this is the example of the sightings that they had, and so, that's just the vertical style of the sightings they put up.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, just, uh.
It's just, you know, it's just one of those issues that comes up, and we gotta straighten it out.
We'll get T and G to working on it.
Uh, fire department meeting is next Monday, and I, and I gave everybody their packet tonight. Okay, is, did that work for everybody, are everybody able to attend?
About seven o'clock, okay.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
We, we got a grant from our insurance company for a thousand bucks.
You feel guilty?
This is from our property insurance company.
Okay.
Anyway, we, we were entitled, we, basically, we just needed to apply for a certain thing, then, and they would fund up to a thousand dollars, we funded for a thousand dollars to purchase a drone that we would utilize in, in our community protection, in policing, in fire, and it has, we'd use it a lot for, uh, work around the lake, and, and using it with our vegetation harvester, as far as directing them where places would be needed. So the chief's been looking into that, and kinda came up with some, uh, a recommended, uh, one that falls within the budget, and.
By how much?
A penny. So yes, we would be the proud owner of a drone.
All right.
Um, and somebody has, came and asked us about whether the city would sell the, the two rafts that we used to put in down at the beach. Anybody have any concerns if we, if we? Anybody have any concerns if we, if we take bids on those rafts that are down there?
Before they get busted?
Not a problem.
Yeah, that would permanently say we're never putting rafts out again, but I think that train has left the station too. Sack County League meeting is next Wednesday, December 14th. It's over at the Auburn Community Building, and the program for the night is that they do this Christmas auction, and it raises money for the league, and then we've used a lot of that money like for, they pay the registration to that Omaha sports show is what they've done. For the past, I don't know how many years, Mayor Westergaard has donated some of his woodworking that we've used as our gifts for the auction, and the mayor would like to do that again this year, and is looking to get paid for as materials for what would, for Sack County, and then we're doing the same thing with Northwest Iowa League. They are little free library boxes.
Like it's at the campground. It's going to be popular.
Total on that was, for material on that, $220 then for the tool.
Find that thing.
Beat it up?
Terrific. So, like I say, Sack County League is next Wednesday over at Auburn, and spouses are encouraged to attend the Christmas meeting. Okay, if I need to get an RSVP back to them.
Probably, yeah, two.
Two?
Yep.
Jerry? Terry?
I'll have to talk to Joy. I'll let you know tomorrow. It's her birthday.
Oh, is it? And the basement of the Auburn Community.
Maybe not. Maybe her birthday gift is you going?
No. This is probably the only thing I ever do without Joy.
Any head count for Northwest Iowa League two doing?
Yeah, I'm working on Sack County League yet. Amy, that work for you or is that church name?
That'll work for me, but Ross probably won't be able to. One of us has got to get to church. He's got to do the elder thing.
Oh, sure.
I'll say yes for one.
All right.
My wife will have to work till seven. Or wait. No, put me down for two.
On Wednesday. Mayor, two?
Yep.
Very good. And then it just happens that Northwest Iowa League then is the following day, on Thursday, December 15th, and that's over at Odebold, at Bowling House.
I'll be there.
Anybody?
And you're all invited December 17th, Wall Lake for our open house for our 50th anniversary.
Really? 50th, huh?
When is that?
December 17th, 6 o'clock. It'll be in the paper.
So Wednesday and Thursday. Thursday's where?
Thursday's at Odebold. Social time starts at 5, but anytime between 5 and 6, they roll in.
That money goes towards four, $500 scholarships that the league gives away.
That's the league, yeah. Yeah, I don't get in with the bus till 5.
Sure.
I'll try to make it one.
Terrific.
And I'm getting my new bus Tuesday, so I don't think I want anybody else driving.
What?
Ah, geez, there you go.
Party bus. Party bus. Looks like party bus for the 50th anniversary.
Kind of shady. The seats are iron and all that, so you can't see the kid.
I think maybe I'll take Friday off, assuming my schedule works out okay, but if I'm not here on Friday, I will be enjoying the day off.
I was going to bring up about the camera at the farmer's market, but Scott said there was some input about not wanting to be with the private enterprise, so that we're down with the choices. We either do nothing, we put our own camera up, or we partner with her. I didn't want to bring it up if the council's not, doesn't want to do anything, we'll do nothing. We'll wait for them to break it again.
How many times has it been?
Twice.
And where's the responsibility lie if it happens again then?
It's, you know, it's just vandalism, you know. I mean, it's been vandal...
Would you like to know who's doing it?
How much vandalism do we have throughout the city?
You know, I...
Are we going to have a camera at every corner?
Sure. I've always considered ourselves relatively lucky.
Yeah.
You know.
So what, who's got what broke now?
At the, it's the blue glass at the farmer's market there in the arch.
They kicked it out twice.
Yeah, I know. I turned it in and that glass.
Well, we'll just let it go. Motion to adjourn?
So...
Second?
Second.
In adjourn.
These calls all stay about the same, don't they?
Have you heard anything about that, Scott? Is...